Shell, before after.
Right there.
We got executives, you want us up here or down there?
I just want to just get it.
Alrighty, we're good to go, 5:31. Good afternoon, everyone, everybody, this is October 21st, Southern City Council Meeting. Start all of our meetings with a momentous invitation and a pledge of allegiance to the people who live on Council Calvin, H.C., Senior. All the regular please rise.
Let us bow again in silent prayer. Lord, Father, we thank you for the privilege to serve our community. We ask that you guide our purpose and our decisions should lie in wisdom, fairness, and compassion. Help us exceed unity over division, purpose over pride, service of ourselves. Bless our city, all its people, our families, neighborhoods. May peace is and justice and progress flow through all we do. Threaten us to lead with integrity and humility. We thank you for calling us to serve. We redo it with humility, courage, and grace. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is famous, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. We have our minutes from October 7th, regular meeting. Any change need to be made or motion approved is ready.
Motion to approve is ready.
Basic moves, gives in seconds. Any further discussion? Here none, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then it's approved, it's ready. We have a special presentation before we get into our business. We're receiving update on Historic Resources Survey for the West End, Hampton Park, Mason Croft Neighborhoods. And also, before we get into that, Mr. Kelly's going to present that. Just a point to note, we do have a public hearing at 6:00 PM. Different than public comment, but at 6:00 PM we'll have a hard stop to go to the public hearing, and then wherever we are, we'll pick back up on the agenda. Where's that? Mr. Kelly?
I hope not to take that long, Mr. Mayor. The, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Kyle Kelly, on behalf of planning staff, I wanted to give you an update on the Historic Resources Survey of the West End, Greater Hampton Park, and Mason Croft areas of Sumter. It's a project that has been funded by the city as well as by the National Park Service through the State Historic Preservation Office. And we had our final draft presentation last night to assemble community members at the meeting house in Memorial Park, and just wanted to give you a brief update on what that study has found and what some of the recommendations for consideration by council look like at this stage. So first, what is a Historic Resource Survey? So this is a process through which, maybe in this case, the city hired an expert consultant, an architectural historian of a firm out of Athens, Georgia called WLA Studio, to systematically identify and research and document properties that reflect important themes to the city's growth and development. The survey identifies, records, and evaluates existing historic properties in the city. And in this case, we have a target boundary that I'll show on the next map. This survey data is a point-in-time snapshot of each structure as viewed from the right of way, as well as a property card, we call it, which is an analysis that explains what are the unique features, the historical factors of each of those structures. The survey, the survey team walked every street in the, in the target area, and took a left oblique, right oblique, and front facade photographed, and then, and then, of course, created a call for each property that will be filed with the State Historic Preservation Office. That, that card explains things like the estimated or known year of construction, the type of structure, and then unique features or specific items to call out that are, that are special or, or of special note for each structure. The target area is a, an area bounded roughly by Broad Street to the north, Washington Street to the east, the CSX railroad track at Royal Yard to the south, and then Ginyar Drive to the, to the west, and then kind of a little bit of Shot Couch Creek and Willow Drive up there in the northwest corner. We did not include the existing Hampton Park Historic District in that, in that survey territory because there is a previously conducted Historic Resource Survey, and we were looking to capture those areas that have never been surveyed, that were omitted from the 2010 citywide Historic Resource Survey, as well as the, the West End neighborhood, which has, you know, was included in that 2010 survey, but were, because of that, that timing and the analysis at the time, didn't proceed through to any formal recommendations. So the, this study identified six properties that are individually eligible for potential listing on the National Register of Historic Places. That is the Good Shepherd Episcopal Church, Henry Haynesworth House, the Liberty Street School, which is, you know, former Liberty Street School, which is now the Liberty Steve Charter School, the Mount Vernon Inn, the Williams Bryce House and Sumter Museum, and the C.H. Bracy Tourist Home. So run through those very quickly. The Good Shepherd Episcopal Church is unique in that it was established in 1913, but built with pieces from Cherryvale Plantation. And so there was basically, the materials used for construction predate the Civil War, but the church itself, of course, was built, established, and then built in 1919. So it was a chapel that was repurposed from the Cherryvale Plantation. It's eligible for listing under criteria C, which is the architectural history. It may also be eligible under the, the criteria A. There are five, four criteria, A, B, C, and D, that the National Park Service uses to determine eligibility for historic significance. Henry Haynesworth House is, is in the heart of Sumter neighborhood on the north side of Liberty Street. It was built for the Sumters' first postmaster, and it was converted to a children's home during the Great Depression. It is eligible under criteria C because it's a good example of vernacular Georgian house. It may also be eligible under criteria A for social history because of that use as a children's home. The Liberty Street School was built in 1949. It was actually built alongside Willow Drive School in a segregated schooling system. It is eligible for listing under a criteria A, which is education and Black history. Interestingly, the, both schools were exceptionally modern for their time, and that's recorded in the Historic Register. And so that Liberty Street School may also be eligible as a good example of mid-20th century school architecture, much of which remains in place even post-renovation for use as a school today. Mount Vernon Inn, and of course, this one got some chuckles last night. The, uh, it is significant. It's, you know, built during a wave of roadside motel construction. It's a good example of the, kind of the colonial revival style motels that were modeled after Mount Vernon, George Washington's home. And so, you know, certainly, it would be something that would, you know, lend its historical character if, if that was desired as, as a historic preservation. Then the Williams Bryce House and Sumter Museum. So this is, this is an interesting one because it, it hits most of the criteria. So it was built by O.L. Williams, who founded Williams Furniture. Features gardens designed by one of South Carolina's first landscape architects, Robert Marvin. So it's eligible because of its architecture as a colonial revival house. It may also be eligible because it's associated with the life and works of O.L. Williams. It may also be eligible because of that landscape architecture component. And so, as well as eligible as an example of an early, or a museum home. Mrs. C.H. Bracy's tourist home is another one that is, is interesting in that it, it was a tourist home that was featured in the Green Book, one of the Green Books, which were important resources for Black travelers during the Jim Crow era. So where Black voters faced challenges in, in traveling. And so there were places identified as places that you could eat, places you could stay. And so the C.H. Bracy tourist home is a, is eligible for listing because of that social history and Black history component. It's also possible that it would be eligible under criteria A because it was a business run by a Black woman during Jim Crow, which is, which is very rare. Mrs. Bracy's husband had a business downtown, it was a successful shoe shining business, but the, 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 basically, bed and breakfast was hers. That was, it was owned by her and managed by her. We also have some other properties that were identified as potentially eligible. A little bit more research will need to be done on these. They are all associated with an important figure in Sumter's history. So Dr. Booker T. Williams House on Bartlett Street, the Dr. Athena Jackson Bates Milliken House on West Oakland, the Chief Justice Ernest Gideon Junior House on West Oakland, James T. McCain Senior House, of course, that's also the James T. McCain Junior House, but James T. McCain Senior House on West Bartlett, Charles Spears and Eva Jesse House. Charles Spears was a columnist who had a, a column published by the Negro Free Press that was called Charlie Spears' Month. It was a, so, like a, almost like a Dear Abby type self-help column. Raymond Schwartz Junior House on Haynesworth Street, the Julian Cluston House on Frank Hart Street, and the Philabel Edwards House on Mason Croft. So as well as the individual properties, there are some potential district designations that, that council may be, you know, interested in pursuing in the future. These are obviously subject to community wants and needs. You know, designation of a historic district in Sumter's tradition, as well as kind of in, in a generic kind of statewide, nationwide tradition, would certainly need to be from the bottom, you know, rather than imposing a historic district on a community, have it be something that the community residents kind of agree, agree with, buy into, and desire. So looking at this, Hampton Park has an existing district designation. That's the, the blue kind of hatch lines. That district boundary doesn't necessarily reflect the, the nature of the, the neighborhood. So there are some areas, particularly Folsom, Chestnut Streets, portions of Haynesworth Street, as well as going a little bit more to the west, that would be logical, they're logical parts of that neighborhood that just aren't within the regulated overlay boundary. Similarly, we have Mason Croft, which is the, the former property associated with the Charles T. Mason House, which is that large red, kind of curved block, block up there in the, in the upper, upper left corner. That was originally several hundred acres, and in some publications, it was referred to as Sumter's first bungalow suburb. So after Charles Mason's death, that, that tract was carved up and turned into lots and developed, and much of that is still exactly as it was built in the 40s and 50s. And then the West End, which is from Liberty Street South, bounded roughly by Ginyar Drive and Ginyar, South Ginyar Drive and Washington Street. The boundaries of each of these, you know, as proposed by an consultant, maybe tweaked as we've identified new information, but wanted to point those out. The West End, of course, is a historically Black neighborhood that was home to a number of important pioneers that championed desegregation, equality, and justice for the Black community in Sumter. As I mentioned, there are several homes in that area that are affiliated with civil rights pioneers, you know, early, early Sumter, kind of fathers and mothers of, of Sumter's civil rights era. It also contains a lot, a number of important social and cultural institutions, particularly former schools that are, that are currently used, obviously Lincoln School, which is being, you know, renovated for use as a museum, and Liberty Street School, which is now a school again, as well as several churches that are of significance to the Sumter's history. As I mentioned, the boundaries of that neighborhood may extend beyond the assigned survey area that was used for this report. Obviously, today, things like Ginyar Drive represent a significant boundary that did not exist in the 1910s, 20s, 30s, 40s, and 50s. And so, you know, the area that is, that lies further to the west may have some, some parts that, that make sense to include or not. Hampton Park, again, the development of the Hampton Park neighborhood began in the 1870s, continuing through the 1920s. It has an eclectic mixture of Victorian and Craftsman architecture. And in the late 70s is when that district was, was organized by the residents, you know, residents of that neighborhood came to city council and requested that district designation. And so that, that is an existing overlay district that has, it says, it does design guidelines and is enshrined in the city's zoning and development standards ordinance, such that new home construction, modifications to existing houses, go through a designer review and certificate of appropriate this process prior to building permit issuance or authorization to do work on, at those homes or, or businesses or churches. The, the local Hampton Park District is eligible for listing in the National Register of Historic Places, but it, it is not currently listed. You know, there's, there's the difference between eligibility and going through the paperwork supplemental process. And so in this case, it's eligible, but has never been submitted for, for inclusion. As, as I said, those boundaries could be expanded, potentially to include the area in the blue line, which is parts of Haynesworth Street, Folsom, Chestnut, and North Salem, as well as extended to the opposite side of the street over there on, and the street names escaped me. But, you know, one side of the street is subject to regulations and the other is not, which sometimes causes confusion. Mason Croft, these are the original survey flats of the subdivision of the, the former Mason, Mason property. That is developed between the 30s and 50s. It, it is a kind of a successor to Hampton Park in that, you know, you have some Craftsman bungalows, English cottages, American small homes, and mid-20th century ranges. The, the overall boundaries and road patterns that are in the historic flats are similar to what already, what still exists today, and the neighborhood has the potential to be considered historic district based, both potentially local designations as well as a, a National Register designation. Coming to recommendations that are in the Historic Resource Survey, so there are those three historic district designations, whether that's a, a local overlay district that has kind of local regulatory teeth, or the National Registered District, which is more honorific, that opens opportunities to certain things like tax credits. That can be a combination, or it could be one or the other. They're not, they're, they're mutually exclusive, they don't have to be done together. You could have a local designation without, a federal designation, or one vice versa. Another recommendation is to update development standards that would limit new construction that would be insensitive to the character of, of those existing neighborhoods. So not limiting infill, but limiting potentially the type of infill, so that you don't end up with very incompatible new development that would be out of context. And then finally is, you know, fostering head heritage tourism, things like developing walking trail, walking routes that look at some of these historic sites and properties. And so that would be a, you know, that is a, something that various neighborhoods around the country have seen some success with, that brings in festivals, brings in kind of neighborhood block parties, and, and has a positive impact on the community. Why would we consider designating historic districts? One, it protects the investments made by owners and residents. Historic districts have, tend to be, or, you know, have higher values, and, and buyers are willing to pay a premium beyond what they might be willing to pay in other areas to live in a designated historic district. Encourages better design. It can help the environment. Obviously, by that I mean not tearing down existing buildings and taking them to a landfill. You know, a lot of historic design is actually very environmentally friendly, environmentally conscious in how it was built. It can enhance business recruitment potential. You know, when, when an industry's looking to come into an area, they, they can tend to look at things like historic districts to see what is the character of the area. And then it can provide other social and psychological benefits, kind of sense of place and sense of community advantages. And then finally, the difference between a National Register listing and a local historic district. The National Register opens some opportunities for tax credits and grants at the federal level, you know, particularly tax credits. The grants are very far and few between, but there are historic preservation tax credits that, that are available to individuals or to individual businesses or entities to conduct preservation activities, you know, restore or preserve those structures. There are some protections from the potential adverse effects of federal projects or certain state projects. It does not prevent demolition of historic properties, and it does not require owners to follow any sort of design guidelines unless a project involves federal or state money or a federal license or permit. On the other side, the local designation does not qualify property owners for federal preservation grants or tax credits, but it does protect significant historic properties through a designer review process that's developed and administered at local level. And that would be, you know, through the city's adopted codes and ordinances. Requires local government approval for new construction and exterior changes to existing properties. Provides for review of proposed demolition, and usually delays and may prevent demolition to allow consideration of alternatives to, to demolition and, and opportunities to preserve a building. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. The report, the final, final presentation took place last night, and so the consultant is putting the finishing touches and, and kind of final flourishes on the report. As soon as that's done, he'll provide a copy to each council member and to, and put it on the website for the general public.
Any questions for Mr. Kelly?
Sure. Mr. Kelly, the areas that are white, if you, like, if you turn back to the, the West End map, the areas that are white, is that vacant lots or?
It's either a vacant lot or a, or a structure that is not old enough to be considered. Generally, it's 40 years to older on a structure is, is considered, they're kind of the threshold for consideration as a potentially historic. But I, those, so for example, there is a, you can see the U shape there, which is the, the Patriot Hall. So there is that, there is a school facility there, but so it either does not have any, you know, it's lost its historical significance because of modifications that have been made, is a vacant lot, or is an historic because it's maybe been built too recently.
Any, any other questions? You were on the historic map for me, the one that?
Which, which one was that, sir?
It was just, it said a historic, that one.
Okay.
Because the search button for that area. Just, just curious, really off topic, what is that on the left-hand side? Those looks like, where is that, what is that, those square buildings or square kind of apartments or, is there any?
Burnings.
Burnings, sorry, that's right, okay, that's right. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think across the street from it, that kind of open field, you know, the Sumter Museum has been doing some, some partner oral history collection within the West End neighborhood, speaking with various residents and their descendants, and their baseball, the, the baseball team would play.
Yeah, that's the home center across the street.
Across the street, you know, there was a building that had a church, and so there was a, a very tiny baseball field used there during segregation.
Wasn't that tiny, seen around the bay when we played?
Relative to a major league park, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Interesting. Alright, that gets us back to our agenda. Got a few minutes for our public hearing. Case of the old business, awards and commissions. I don't have anything to add tonight, or anything to, to you to add to anybody. Here none, moving to item three. RC 25, that's 14419 South Lafayette Drive. Ms. Ruth, so this one's been on here for a few, we still have some questions, I think.
Yeah, just for refresher, the original request was to rezone the property to general residential. There was a recommendation from Planning Commission to approve that request. There was some extensive comment and discussion at the very first council meeting. I believe that it was, actually was deferred on that to the opportunity for the property owner and representatives to speak to each other about what their plans were, and it has kind of been on pause since that conversation. So really, I'm, I'm happy answering questions which you may have, but I'm at your leisure.
Thank you. Any questions for?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to defer. I met with the property owner this past week. She is trying to find the owner of the lot behind that property, so she can put her mobile home on that location. So I would like to give her onehold now, to see can she get the other lot to put her mobile home on.
So Ms. Bracy moves to defer to our, our next meeting, first meeting in November. I've said it most. Last game, second. Any further discussion? Here none, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it's deferred to first meeting in November.
Thank you.
Item number four, annexation 2665 West Oakland Avenue, consider final reading, see anything you'd add.
There are no changes to this request, it's first read, we continue to recommend approval.
Any questions for Ms. Ruth? Here none, is there motion, consider final reading?
Move for approval.
Second.
H.C. moves, Kennedy seconds. Any further discussion? Here none, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And final reading carries. Take us into item five, Business License Ordinance. We've got about five minutes, do we have time?
I think so.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I'll ask Mr. Crowe to, to correct me if I get any of this wrong, but as you remember, a few years ago, the, our State House passed a statewide law that sort of standardized business license across board, and every entity in South Carolina has business license needs to stay consistent with that. Part of that, we did, of course, council passed that, but a part of this is periodically there has to be updates to the different pieces of the business license ordinance to keep it, the, the, basically, the profitability tables across all of those business lines, they, they move over time, so there must be adjustments. And the state can, current and viable and within the state law, we have to make these amendments periodically. So Yonan's work was done a few years ago, this is just a periodic update. And included in this update for your consideration is some slight changes in the rate classification. What we've attempted to do is keep what you budgeted the same, so no big changes, no big revenue grabs or anything like that. So the mandated changes and trying our best to keep all things equal the same. So some minor rate, rate changes that should keep us about the same as what you budgeted at, at budget time. So be happy to answer any questions. That's sort of the, the simple version of it. Now, again, Mr. Crowe can answer all the hard questions you might have about that. But, but we did have a municipal managers' meeting last week, and we were reminded that this needs to be fully enacted by December.
Any questions, Mr. Foreman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, sir. Given our notice, we have listed seven licensed specialty facilities, so those are the only ones that this, are just will apply to?
Are, are we talking about the?
I think you're on different.
Yeah, that, that'll be the, that'll be the public hearing we talk about shortly. Yes, sir. We'll talk about that.
Any other questions? Here none, is there motion, consider first reading?
Make motion.
Second.
Shaw moves, Kennedy seconds. Any further discussion? Here none, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And first reading carries unanimous. That puts us right at 5:59, so we'll pick back up on item six here shortly. We'll read guidelines for public hearings, different than in our public comment sections later on in the agenda. So staff can present a request, and council members can then question staff. Advocates can then speak on behalf of the request, then council can question that applicant. Any city residents in favor of the request can then address council. Any city residents opposed to their request may address council. If you're a city resident or have a financial interest in the property under discussion, you may speak. If you're a city resident or have a financial interest in the property under discussion, you may speak. Each person meeting requires will given opportunity so, however, become repetitions or a grand call tied up. A decision may or may not be made at this meeting, however, a decision will be made at a public meeting. Once the public hearing is declared closed, there will be no additional comments from the audience unless called on by council. With that, we're in our public hearing on oh eight twenty-five dash oh six, special event facilities.
Yes, oh eight twenty-five, Helen Reap Group for planning staff. Oh eight twenty-five oh six is for special events facilities. The city is the applicant for this request. It will amend Exhibit three, Article three, Exhibit three five, and Article five B one I, as well as five B two, five B three, and ten B one, to modify the zoning districts that special events facilities need to be established in, and to make them special exception approvals that go through a public hearing process similar to the way that we review things like nightclubs and liquor stores and other things that have potentially objectionable ramifications to neighborhoods because of use of time. As you'll recall, several, probably a few years ago, we established special events facilities as a conditional use around about the time that the state changed their liquor licensing liability requirements and legal standards for insurance. We saw a big run of people trying to open special events facilities as a runaround for getting proper liquor licenses to run bona fide drinking establishments. This was more, more of an issue inside, in the county jurisdiction, but at the time that we're making the changes to the county code to address the difference between a drinking place and a special events facility, we also made those changes within city limits. We've had a few years to work with that set of regulations and figure out kind of some of the pitfalls to that process. And equally, from a staff level, it is likely more appropriate to do these as a special exception review process so that we get everything and everybody on the same page. First and foremost, we will be defining special events facility, refining it. It is a commercial facility oriented to individuals, groups, or organizations to host gatherings such as weddings, receptions, business meetings, scaleless, networking events, and conferences. Special events facilities are intended to cater to a significant diversity of individuals, groups, and organizations on a contractual basis with such individual groups, organizations, and organizations holding unique events on a irregular basis only. The sentence that you see underlined is what's being added to this definition. So everything above this last sentence is already the definition. The special events facilities are not intended for spaces to hold nightclub-type events that are open to the general public. What we have seen in some of the facilities across the community is that a promoter will rent the facility for the night, and then it becomes a de facto nightclub. There's no requirement for acquiring a ticket before the event happens. You can just show up at the door, come to the party, et cetera. So it really becomes acting as a de facto nightclub, which is not the intended purpose for a special events facility the way the code was adopted. So we're trying to close that loophole. So this is not a new topic for discussion with the city. As I've said, in two thousand and twenty-one, we actually made them a conditional use with mixed results. We had some special events facilities that at times, not always, not all the time, conduct site activities that are more in alignment with the description of a nightclub, resulting in increased enforcement attention from multiple city departments. We've seen an uptick in the special event facility inquiries over the last couple of years for sites that are not necessarily appropriate for the use. They're either just not big enough to accommodate the use because there's minimal tenant space, or there isn't enough parking, or there is going to be undue effects from hours of operation on adjacent uses. So we believe from a staff perspective, this proposed amendment would make establishing special events venues subject to more robust review and through a public hearing process, as well as stringent citing and operational requirements aimed at mitigating those external impacts. As you're all aware, the development pattern in our city has houses right next door to our commercial areas. You know, everybody has great relationships of trying to work with commercial areas, but if you think you're living next door to a special events facility that you think is going to be closed by eleven o'clock on a Friday, Saturday night, and come to find out they're having a party at two and three o'clock in the morning, then that has an outdated impact on the neighborhood. So this is kind of what this is trying to address. We do currently have seven facilities that are licensed as special events facilities in the community. We have the O'Donnell House, Silver Spoon. We have Events on Barra that was approved in two thousand and twenty-five. Infinity Event Center, which was approved in twenty-four. There's a Canton Entertainment Services, which is the Canton Center. And then La Piazza, which is approved in two thousand and twenty-five, as well as Benny One Eighteen LLC. So there are a variety of facilities that are currently licensed as special events facilities. Don't necessarily see these changes to our regulations impacting these existing businesses, but if they were to go out of business and be closed for more than six months, then they would have to go through the use review process and address the criteria we're proposing as new language. First and foremost, we're looking at removing them from the limited commercial zoning district. They would be a special exception in general commercial in the central business district and the industrial zoning district, and they would be removed from agricultural zoning in the city. We would be adding a list of special event facility review criteria. The easier for you guys to see this on your monitor, I apologize to the public. I did not realize how tiny this was going to be. But first and foremost, we will be looking at separation standards at three hundred feet from churches, schools, parks, public playgrounds, residential uses. The reason I put a little box around this is because we realized after we brought this to council that we did not do a central business district carve-out to have an exemption from that stringent separation standard. Because of how the downtown is developed, we can't need that three hundred foot separation. And because we view the downtown and central business district as a place that we want to have is a lively twenty-four hour location and activity, you know, we do believe that there should be a carve-out to not have the residential separation standard at three hundred feet, because you can't have second-story residential in a dense downtown and then say this special events facility can't be next door to it simply because there's a house next door. We've done this carve-out also for drinking places in the central business district. Also, the screening that we're proposing is really for more of a suburban environment. We are proposing six-foot fence between the use and an adjacent residential use. There needs to be carve-out to remove that requirement for the central business district specifically. We are looking at the requirement of having onsite manager, meaning that there is a person that is actually there during the entirety of the event that is a representative of the event center, not just the renter of the building. And then we're looking at reviewing the parking requirements to ensure that there's appropriate parking for the facility, just to go to horizontal heels. And then limiting the hours of operation from six AM to eleven PM, excluding the time required for new staff members to prepare, set up, tear down for the facility with the sighting, kind of the event running down by one o'clock at night. We're also looking at insurance requirements, so they have to have valid liability insurance. And then the on-premise consumption or sales of alcohol would have to comply with state law. Special event facilities where the state drinking laws work can't actually get an on-premise alcohol license for special events. There's an entire set of rules that the state requires specifically for special event facilities. And so there would be bringing it into line with how the state views drinking or alcohol use on an event facility. Essentially, if you're hosting a private party, you can hire a licensed bartending service. You are paying the bartender for their service. You're not paying for the alcohol by the drink. You're paying for what is being consumed by your guests. If it's a, like, a gala or fundraiser, they can't qualify that it doesn't have an open bar. They can't get a special, like, special events drinking license. So for that specific event, a nonprofit can apply to the state to deliver by the drink license for that specific event. Or if you're hosting your child's wedding or your own wedding, and you're having a reception there, you can hire a bartending service, and you basically just pay that service for the alcohol that's consumed. You're not paying them for each drink. You're paying the price for the alcohol, and you're paying for their bartending services. And so that's how the events facility drinking works under state law. And then there would be a compliance inspection requirement where we make sure the fire and building codes are all met on the particular structure so that it complies with all of those necessary standards. So those are the special events review criteria that the city would be looking at in addition to general compatibility standards. And then we would also require a submission of an operational plan. This is already in the conditional use review criteria that we have in place today, which provides us a drawing of the building with the proposed use areas, drive aisle, side access, et cetera, so that's a site plan process. Establishing maximum capacity for the facility based on the building and fire codes. Contact information for the onsite facility manager or managers, if there's more than one person, that's going to be the onsite responsible party. Kind of an idea of the types of market events that are going to be marketed or anticipated throughout the year. And then the duration of time that the facility will be operating, whether it's seasonally, year-round, daily hours of operation. And then a solid-based management plan that indicates how the garbage from the facility is going to be handled and disposed of. Planning Commission did recommend approval of this request. As I noted, I do, we do need to make an amendment to the central business district separation standards in the slide that I have those two criteria up there circled, because we certainly do not want to hamper the dense development areas of downtown from being able to have special events facilities in local compliance. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Quick question for you.
Yes, sir.
What about the businesses that are downtown and as apartment complexes, like seniors in the back, will they need to private get a fence also, or...?
So the two that I circle here, if it's in the CBD zoning district, we're going to have an elimination of certain aspects of that. It will come back to a second reading, I will detail those, because we realized at the eleventh hour that we forgot to address that. So if it's in the downtown, if it's in the central business district, zoning district, a suburban-type development requirement really doesn't make sense. So we need to, we need to add some caveats, some language to that to clarify that.
Okay. My last question is, what about businesses that are restaurants normally during the day, and they have an event center attached to them? How will this affect them?
If they are already existing as an event center, this is not going to affect them unless they close for more than six months.
Okay, so they're, they're saying grandfathered?
Correct.
But there was a listing of, Council Hastings is going to ask that, like, seven or eight or whatever it says.
These are the locations that we are aware of that are properly licensed special events facilities inside the city limits. And that was taken directly from the business license department based on this code and based on the conditional use reviews that we have done. A couple of these businesses predate even that conditional use review process.
For example, like Lincoln High School, that was a facility that used to have a lot of special events. And I'm so happy for this, a lot of this, because they used to rent the building from us and have all kinds of pockets and drinking going on. But they're not listed as a special events center now because, you know, they're closing now, but they soon will be opening back up. Would they become, would they fall under the same guidelines as this?
So it's a multi-use building, but there would be an aspect of it that would have to be reviewed as a special event facility, and that's one of their primary sources of income and their process. And now that you have mentioned that, we are probably going to have to look at the separation standards again, because it's right next door to a church.
And residents all around it.
And so as I'm standing here, what I'm going to ask council to do is defer action on this, on first reading, after you guys hold your public hearing, because I think that we need to dig a little bit into those two things. And none of this came up at Planning Commission, but I'm surprised it could run that up.
If there's any more, we can stimulate talk.
Now, is this only brick and mortar? It's been dark my attention that during the fair this year, the, roughly two years, that they have served alcohol. And they do not have a building that they sell alcohol out of, normally, to my knowledge. They just opened one of the barns and you could go in.
So now that, that, the American Legion is a nonprofit, and they are a sponsor of the fair, and they went through the state process, a state requirement, to get the beer license to sell the beer at that event, just as any special event can. I would not consider the fair a special event. However, the American Legion, in the capacity that a lot of facilities like that do, does rent out their facilities as well. And when they have alcohol those facilities, it's generally done. I'm not even sure they're allowed to at weddings, but it's a different lease. It's not the same thing as a special events facility.
Helen, I guess the Hope Centers would fall into that same category and you would not qualify as a special events?
The Hope Centers are city property, and they were specifically built as community centers. They're, they're, again, cities kind of got their own special ability to do what they do under state law, not just local regulations. But again, I would defer to Mr. McQuarant, but if somebody is renting those facilities to hold a family event, there is a set of rules and expectations that go along with that. And I do believe there may be some measure of liability insurance depending upon the size and scale of the event that's taking place. And security. That's what you said, you said, that's security, right, as long?
I'll be poised, any other questions or any other comments? Or Ms. Ruben? Thank you. So we want to have, we don't have, so we won't question ourselves, although we question Ms. Ruben. So that's good. So we move to the point of any city residents in favor of the request, like to address council. Anyone in favor? Anyone in favor? Last call, anyone in favor, like to address council. Here none, anyone opposed to the request, like to address council? Anyone opposed? Yes, ma'am, come to the podium, name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Ellen Brunson, and I'm referring to property three zero one, South Munchery. I was just going to ask for the fact of opposing that if you, this kind of question, when you're coming in to go through, like, the site plans with existing businesses, is it necessary to shut those down? Or do you have a process where you work with the business owner so that they continue with their livelihood and make money so that they can pay for required changes for their venue to be allowed to have special events? Or when you pass this resolution, do you just shut down businesses and not allow them time to be bought up to whatever new regulation? So I'm opposing it because I know of businesses that have been shut down and not afforded the right to have time to bring their building, make the changes that you're requiring for them to have special events.
Thank you, ma'am. So you're opposing, any specific question? It's not a question and answer time, so we can get your questions answered afterwards. Staff, you can address your questions as...
Yeah, I'm opposing, that's all. That was my reasoning for opposing.
Gotcha, thank you, ma'am. Any others, anyone else oppose? Anyone else oppose? Last call, any residents opposed to the request, like to address council? Here none, declare the public hearing closed. What is the pleasure of council?
I think she suggested we defer, so I would like to make a motion that we defer this decision until later time.
Second. So Hasty moves, Gibson seconds. We need to attach a date to that, next meeting or two meetings or...?
For the sake of maximum public attendance, I would be okay if we moved it to the second meeting in November, just so that everybody's kind of aware of what the new language will be.
Listen, Hasty, it's much of the second meeting in... Gibson still seconds, any further discussion? Here none, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And oh eight twenty-five dash oh six, we prefer seven. Thank you, ma'am. All right, takes us back to our regular agenda. We have procurement resolution ten eleven. We've got that one. Ms. Kelly?
Mr. Mayor, move to council, this is a request as noted here is the procurement resolution for Opera House renovation. This is a request as noted here is the procurement resolution for Opera House renovation. Consider this phase two, which is the overall renovation project, the Opera House. We've been planning before for phase, the previous phases. But this particular phase is again with good construction because we're under a CMR construction management risk agreement. And this should be the, the final major phase of this, this procurement portion. This, this contract request here is seventeen million, four hundred eighty-three dollars, four hundred eighty-three thousand, seven hundred seventy-seven dollars for the, this Opera House project. Be glad to answer any questions you have on that.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Gaddis? Please to the Opera House project. Any questions? Thank you, sir. For council, like, consider resolution 1011. Our circular. Hasty moves. Remember, can blast again, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it carries your notice. I number seven, council points. Anyone that they'd like to share for the good of the community, the good of council?
I would like to share, I can, Mr. Mayor, about things that are going in the South something called, yeah, the tackle football team still practicing out there three days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday. Young men from the ages of eight to ten, ten to twelve, and twelve to fourteen. From the first time, it's from City Center. We had an all-girls flag football tournament in that park. And we had five, two, seven from Arnold State One and from Georgia. Tremendous competition in the park. We'd like to thank the chief for providing security out there in the park. There were over four hundred young people and families in the park one day. It was a Sunday afternoon, so I want to just share that with the, the council. Also, we still have the farmers' market going on Matty Avenue every Friday from four to seven. We ask those to come out and join us. It's been a lot of fun, but we may have to close it up because it's getting a little colder. So we just thank the city for the support, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, Mayor and Council, I do want to take this opportunity to express thanks and appreciation on behalf of West End Neighborhood Association, several of them in the audience tonight for the West End Park. It's being utilized. I ride through and see the young people, they're not so young, out there shooting basketball. So we looking forward to phase two of the construction. So thank you so very much. Want to thank, want to send, send a shout out to Chief of Police, Chief Russell Rourke and his assistant chief and his staff. We had a funeral at Mount Zion Church just past Tuesday. One of his lieutenants hustled, was funeralized. And I was so proud of some of the police department because they showed up. Had about twenty officers there in uniforms and gave family a full escort from Mount Zion Church to Fort Jackson. I thought that was so touching. So chief, shout out to you. Y'all did a great job. Attended Pine Day of Neighborhood Association meeting on this past Thursday. Had a good meeting. They are planning the, have in the folder, a fall festival on this coming Thursday. Five to seven P.M. It's going to be assistance, assistance, after Peter's Drive. It's free, open to the public. At the meeting, we did discuss about the changes in the representation of Pine Day. Since I've been on council, I've been representing Pine Day of Neighborhood, the cost of the population shift, and we draw under the lines, Council of Hasty that, that told us Pine Day for me. So they raised the question, who's our councilman? You raised that, well, I. I said, "Y'all are blessed, y'all got two," because I do have a couple of street said Pine Day. But he got the bump up. So they got two councilmen there. But I, they got two councilmen, y'all will have one. But anyway, we're going to work together and get a lot of things accomplished. I do want to thank the staff for addressing roofing issues. Resident, one of our residents on Gabe McCoy, kind of called us knowing that she was very pleased that they came out, working on the roof for her, her dad, David, David Diaz plus. Also want to announce that Morris College Homecoming would be Homecoming Parade. We have a lot of events over the weekend. But the Homecoming Parade will be November first at seven o'clock. And you are invited, you participate, come out on behalf of President of College, Dr. Sewell. And following the parade, that will be segregated on the campus. And also, men and women basketball. We have, we'll be playing Voorhees University in Denver. Big rivalry. Been a while since we played Voorhees and we just happen to get into the homecoming. The women game will be at two, and I think the men will be at four. So Dr. Collins, please plan to be there. I do know that Greater Tame of Commerce have a parade that morning, a march, a walk, hot walk that morning. So a lot of things going on that side of the morning. And of course, Clemson planned homecoming. And Benedict planned homecoming on November first. So a lot of things going on November first.
That's also South Carolina State Youth Day too, so.
That's right. That's right. Now, y'all have homecoming already.
Yes, sir, thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, my name, the lady at Pastor Glassman was speaking. She was so pleased with Pastor Glassman. She called me, telling me what a wonderful job he did, helping her with the housing problem he spoke about.
Oh, that's great. Any others?
Yes, sir.
Please.
Well, Mayor, I had the privilege of attending my first historic meeting last night. The meeting came up and wore for was very well represented and I appreciate y'all coming out. It was a very good learning experience and something's moving on and that's a great thing. Thank you to the staff, great presentation, and it was very well attended. I also did notice that when we walked out, not complaining, just making a statement, that the parking lot is still extremely dark. And so I know we're eventually going to have some lights in. And so that will be a very welcome part of the memorial park. And thank all of you that attended.
Yeah, well, just a few bullet points. The Tennis for Turkeys Tournament started in 2021, provides Thanksgiving baskets for turkeys and ready-to-cook Thanksgiving meals for over two hundred fifty of our Shaw Air Force Military members in band. So as we all, we all support this community and so many support our, our airmen and troops out there. Over thirty businesses and organizations, over twenty individual donors sponsored and donated over fourteen thousand dollars, and fifteen thousand dollars was the goal. So that was so far this year. So that's really, really great. Fifty-six players contributed, people from out of town came. And since 2021, over seventy thousand dollars has been raised to support the military families at Shaw Air Force Base. So again, just thank you for the community that comes out to support those that help protect us and protect our freedoms that we have to be able to do what we're doing tonight out there, especially as busy as they've been lately. So however we can do that. So just a shout out to those that organize and play and donate. So we thank you for that. Any, anyone else? Hearing none, gets us to city manager report.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Mayor and Council, we have the financials for the month of September. It looks in order. Please do review those. And as always, let us know if you have any questions at all. Think that was the biggest thing we wanted to talk about. We've got demolition coming up on the screen just a couple of weeks ago, but we just want to keep you current. The activity, current activity. Again, you see the releases, the title searches, so a lot of activity behind the scenes that leads into a full-blown demolition. And as we mentioned last meeting, the grant grant is now underway. And there have been eight releases signed just in the last two weeks. So continued work. The releases, so that's the property owners themselves signing to, to have the property demolished. Remember, both of these big grant requests, we sent a finite list of properties in with our application. So we're working off of that list. And then each one, we're updating the releases, making sure everything's still right to, to move forward. Then we work into the title searches to make sure everything is in order as best as removal before the demolition and then ultimately the demolition. So it's a awful lot of work behind the scenes to just get one done. So there's, there's multiple ones happening. And we're happy to see those numbers increase and be successful what we apply to do.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I mean, Darren, I noticed that 25 New Larry Street is the only one that's left on that list. Is there a problem with 25 East St. Larry Street? Anybody doing it?
It's, it's in process. That's on the county's list. We're working together with them on. But John, John works with that, so we'll, we'll find out.
New Larry Street is by Eric. Right by Happy Mall.
Right.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, sir, we'll let you know.
There was a problem or something.
If there is a problem, let you know, but I think it's just in process.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the, on demo? Thank you, sir. Anything else?
Yes, sir.
I got you. Takes us to our comments by our citizens. Now we're reaching time for the agenda for comments by our citizens, consistent with city code, opportunity for citizens of the city who've signed up prior to meeting, the dress council, city matters, reception of personnel matters. In interest of time, comments by any one speaker in the number three minutes. To more repetition, conserve time. There's this group of citizens, neighborhood group, citizens committee, who wishes to express the same view or advocate for the same position. We actually designate one or two to speak on behalf. In addition to this portion of the agenda, decides that citizens, those who are not citizens, can express their opinions to council, telephone, email, other avenues on the city website. This is not intended as a question and answer session. The council or the city manager is an opportunity for us to hear from our citizens of the city. So we appreciate those that have signed up tonight. Colette Jones. Have the podium man, ma'am, and name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, my name is Colette Jones, thirty-three, Hatfield Street. My name is Colette Jones. I am a retired Air Force veteran who resides in Asante County. I've raised three children that completed their education at Crisswood High School. I am also a poet, poet and spoken word artist. I believe in the ministry of power of words. Words expressed wisely or foolishly can be the difference between seasons of eating fruit planted from bitter or sweet seeds. During the month of October, we will typically read many primary source documents, participate in wall of C movies, or hear testimonies about domestic violence and the effect it has on women, men, families, and society. One out of every three women, one out of every four men will experience some form of physical violence from an intimate partner during their lifetime. This is an evil within our society that has roots in misogyny, toxic femininity, as well as masculinity and dysfunctional generational relationship behavior patterns within our culture that all of us have an obligation to root out. For all sobering statistics, there are some which have not been added to this equation, the ones who do not report. For changes to occur, one must embrace that changes are required. Apologies without changes are just handcuffs manipulated to keep individuals bound. To break the chains of this cycle, we must be the change we desire to see. Harmless jokes and looking the other way have allowed these horrendous views and actions to become normalized. It is only when something tragic happens that we react with the routine murmurs combined in horror and empathy. Let's be honest, Asante County has countless of heartbreaking incidents. At what point will we stand up not just as citizens of the city, the county, the state, or as a nation and say, "This is enough"? We cannot wait for another person to lose their life. We must understand that perpetrators do not wait until October to create victims. The District, the District of Columbia has this, a sixty-seven point one percent of domestic violence incidents that result in fatalities, and we are number thirty-four. Out of fifty states, we rank number six for the nation of domestic violence incidents that result in fatalities. We have forty-six counties in South Carolina, and we are number six currently in the rankings. In collaboration with the Asante County Midland Fatherhood Coalition, I invite you to attend the Second Annual Trees for Soul. It will occur on Thursday, October thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, from six to eight P.M. At the Burning Hope Center. We're asking for poets and others to come out and share testimonies of going from trauma to triumphant victim to victorious. We are also collecting personal care items that will be donated to Hush No More. And I have flyers available, and I link you with this note. I am somebody that you know.
Thank you, ma'am.
I am Steven Wynn. My address is 1009 Wacker Street. Good evening. I am the current president of the Carters Upper Neighborhood Association. I'm joined by members of our board of directors, and I'm going to ask them to stand. And now I'm going to ask them to sit. We are here to thank you. Some time ago, as you know, our Neighborhood Association began a bricks for Memorial Park project. Residents and others, including some of you, purchased bricks in memory of others for an honor of others and themselves. You have supported our efforts since before the first brick was purchased. The project is almost complete. One brick is being replaced due to spelling error. All others have been installed, bordering a sidewalk leading from the same land, we're parking lot to the playground. People, dogs, places, and organizations are represented. We think the bricks are an attractive and interesting addition to Memorial Park. We're grateful to you for helping to make this happen. And we appreciate other things you can do and will do to make it something an even better place to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wynn.
Good evening, my name is Ruth McKinnon. I reside at 412 San Antonio. I think that as our issue with the house at 391, as I'm aging, it's falling apart. And I hope I don't begin to do that same thing. It hurts me to my heart that our coach can't do anything about a house that's falling apart. Literally, I, I hadn't gone that way in about, I guess, maybe three weeks. But since that time, the garage has fallen in. The front, the, the right side was already completely apart. And the wires from the pole across the street have fallen in the yard of the driveway of the elderly man that lived next door. He's not there anymore. I don't know whether he's at a nursing home or his daughter decided to move him. But. um, I'm concerned about the business that's being released in our community, um, and I just feel like the person who owns that house has no respect for the city, the residents, because he's owned eleven houses that have um, someone had to take over them. I don't understand why you would give someone who's been that blatant with property the chance for another year to redeem himself. I know God is the only person that can judge, but when someone violates your code repeatedly, I just don't understand it, and it breaks my heart. Um, my son was here two, three weeks ago, and he's a mom, I'm gonna put it on Facebook for you. They grew up in Crosswell, and they used to stand in front of that postman's house, beautiful yard, azaleas, he really took care of it. So it breaks my heart to see us allow it to happen, and I say I'm included, um, because I'm part of the community. So, I, Mr. Hasty gave me the idea to speak to the city manager, um, and I'm hoping that will make a difference. It isn't, it's not much to tear down, you need to ride by Thirty-Nine Line before you let this week go by, you should ride by that house and see what it looks like, thank you. And I want to say our new president is Anitra Grant, um, I want her to stand. Um, young blood. As I said, I feel like aging with that house, okay, so she, she has ideas, and I hope that she doesn't have to deal with this, I hope you don't make a decision and have that house taken down.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Philip Marshall.
Uh, my name's Philip Marshall, along North Salem Avenue. Um, since twenty twenty, this is about the sixth time I've brought up questions to the city council about the recycling that ceased because of COVID. Um, apparently it's not a revenue positive solution to do curbside recycling, and I don't know what's happened to the recycling trucks. I didn't see them moving around since they had been being used, but, uh, you know, if the city isn't going to, uh, have any curbside recycling, perhaps they'd consider going back to the recycling centers and at least make where the people in the county have to bring their garbage, they would be more apt to recycle. Um, citizens that, you know, were environmentally prudent could take the trouble to be recycling at the centers. Um, there are companies that will take, uh, I called them, they said they will take between one, to take the one through eight plastic. But right now, the only thing that gets recycled in Senter is cardboard, which I'm assuming Sunoco is probably a quick buy for that. Anything else gets populated into the landfills, which seems, you know, wrong on a number of levels, not just microplastics, but just the fact that idea takes up more volume and it should be recycled, this, it's twenty twenty-five. I can tell when I walk through my neighborhood on garbage day, um, when I walk by Airbnb and there's someone from out of town, and they, bless their hearts, they put their recycling out there. Oops, we don't do that, and, you know, and they say, you don't recycle either? No, we don't, and there's not even an option to do that. Um, so, I haven't gotten anything word back, I, I obviously see it hasn't been restarted, and then the number of times I've brought it up. Um, I may propose also that if y'all decide not to pursue even the fact of having bins and rollbacks or whatever at the recycling centers, maybe y'all could rename the recycling centers, just call them cardboard and household waste, household waste, and scratch the recycling center part, because it's, uh, really not even close to that. Um, please take this into consideration again, maybe if you had before. Um, and at the least, maybe do the rollbacks, uh, it would appreciate it from me, and I'm sure you may see some actually other people around town come out of the woodwork to do it, so, thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Philip Marshall. No, Mayor Bertin, uh, Flashkin just reminded me to support another, the pink ties, y'all may have seen us take a picture, but it's just pink October, to, just to continue to bring awareness of breast cancer, breast cancer awareness month. We see folks at ball games and different things across our community and our country, uh, wearing that, supporting that. I think many of us will notice someone that's been affected by breast cancer, cancer of June, so, you know, thank you for that reminder, Mayor Bertin. Mr. Gordon, speaking, so the, the, Sunco County runs a recycling service, you can't go to a recycling center, so I thought they took more, so I'm mistaken on that, what do they take?
I can double check with them, you, you're correct, they place those centers all around the county, and we, even the city residents or county residents as well, pay for that service, so um, it's, it's my understanding that they ran into the same issue, like who will take their recycling? And, and, or is it just make us feel better to think we're recycling, then it goes in the, the dump anyway, so I'll ask the county administrator the details of that, but they have a contract to run each of those recycling centers for all of us, so that is open to everyone. Uh, but, but I'm not aware of, uh, I, I think it's a vendor issue, but I'll, I'll ask that and give the answer back to you.
Yes, sir, thank you. I've reached the end of our agenda, I am aware that we need a brief executive session, uh, please stay on the screen. See, is there a motion going to the executive session?
Side.
That's right. Any moves, blast and game seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, we're in executive session, step to the back. Got four others, motion to come out of the executive session, so move.
Aye.
All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, we're in open session, uh, breaks at the end of our agenda, no action to be taken, informational only, executive session, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Stand and adjourn.